We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise, face the flag, and join us in the reflection of the meeting?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, couple of minor changes. Under the action, new business, we will delete item nine. I'm using the term redundant, but there's another word for that somewhere. We're addressing that under ten, I believe. And I would like to make number four, which is consideration to appoint a school board position to one A. And we'll deal with that right away, rather than down the list, just in case there's some need for our work. So, with those two changes, I look for a motion to approve the amended agenda. Katie? Oh, second. Second by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Schedule presenter, Bill Erickson, an alumnus of ours, I believe.
I guess, a few years ago. Nineteen seventy.
Excuse me. Oh geez, I thought you were seventy-two as well.
No, I'm a little older than you are, Bob.
Yeah. You want the same goal.
Well, I don't know about that. I got one more gray here.
Once you hand out your presentation, maybe you could stand off to the side.
I will do that when we can get your best side there. You probably got it ready now. I see you're listening, looking at the names on the windshield like it was back.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Steve was classmate of mine.
I'm sure.
Well, you want to take a look at the letter that I have here. And I'll kind of go through it myself.
Bill, you're here as the Cannon Falls FFA alumni.
Well, yes, I'm representing the Cannon Falls FFA alumni. This has been an ongoing thing through the years, but we actually updated and rebooted it here this past year. And right now, we have fifty-one members. And they're not necessarily have to be alumni, but a supporter of the program. This is something that state of Minnesota has, so we're tied to the state. And it's pretty unique because our thoughts on this is that, you know, you got your band booster, you got your athletic boosters. So, we're the FFA boosters. Because, I don't know, any of you ever been involved with the FFA in the past years as members? Okay. Well, this is one of the youth organizations that... I'm pretty high on it. I think it's one of the top ones when you look at what it can do for young people as far as preparing them for the real world and that. So, their leadership abilities and so forth. But anyway, like I said, there's fifty-two members in our group. If you look down the list here, they get support from local businesses such as Bayer, First Farmers, Merchants Bank, Farnale, and others. We're excited this year to see that nearly all members of the Cannon Falls FFA advanced to state competition, which is contests that they participate and they have to win their way through the district to get to the state and perform at the state FFA convention, usually held in St. Paul. So, this is a well-organized group. I mean, it's been going on, I think, Cannon Falls. I believe it was in like the nineteen forty's that the egg program started. Carl Olstrom was one of the first advisors here. The FFA has been part... It wasn't originally with it, but it became part of it. And I think it was nineteen... I want to say in the middle of the seventies, they allowed girls to be in the FFA. And that has been quite a deal because these young ladies, I mean, I give them a lot of credit in the leadership that they exploit, you know, showing that. So, what we're trying to do here is just let our members... We just wanted to go record stating that our members voted for the levy, with the idea would be update and improve agriculture education opportunities for kids as well, to all their areas of career and technical education. With that, we hope that construction remodeling would allow for the growth and the flexibility for change that these fields consistently go through. We were concerned to hear that functional classroom space might be given up to expand receiving areas, storage. I just want to make sure that any of the remodeling would allow for changes to the egg program that might have a need for lab and classroom space for areas of horticulture, agronomical science. That's another thing about the FFA is that, like I said, it's more than just production agriculture. Egg programs were the passive in basically effect. The FFA was called the future farmers of America at one time, but they've erased that. It's just FFA now. So, and we are happy to hear that Mr. Pluskas has joined our last meeting to report about the great success of the students at the FFA members this year. When asked about the levy, he also stated the excitement to see updates when the shop area is creating a safer, more flexible space for current manufacturing education for those shop-specific classes. But he also stated that he wasn't sure how flexible the other space would be when it comes to the program change to address other agricultural areas, such as those we listed above. He stated that he will not be here forever and wants to make sure a difference instructor would have what they need to take things in a different direction. We also hope as alumni here. Are these future needs being addressed in the normal plans? We're giving a functional classroom space for additional shipping and receiving areas that are not easily converted back to lab space for things like food science and horticulture. We all trade areas for hurting for employers right now and agriculture right there on the top of that list. In addition, being made elsewhere for the storage and receiving to make sure these spaces are available for education and for expanding fields as well. And I want to thank you guys for giving, for your attention in this, to this letter and the concerns our group has. And we look forward to continued success for the FFA students at Cannon Falls. And this was sincerely signed by Eric Lundell, who was our president at the present time. So, I just wanted to address the board to let you know basically what the backing is for the program. I mean, I've been in... Actually, like I said, I was here in nineteen seventy. I graduated. It's always been a little challenge. We were very fortunate to get Mr. Holbert in here. Prior to that, the egg program was... It was struggling, but he came in and he really helped straighten it out. And now, Mr. Pluskas has done a great job as far as keeping it going. So, we, and I think, just for my thought, I am really sold on the FFA program. So, any questions?
There seems to be just, in this letter, just a little bit of conversation about losing space.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're a little concerned about from what we've heard and so forth. And then, I, you know, I... That's basically what... And like I said, it's not necessarily... That's a potential problem, but as a whole, we want to just let everybody know that there's some people out there that are really back. I mean, that want to back this program, no matter who the instructor is, just the program itself. And I think, like I said, nineteen seventy, and I'm not proud of this, but I had three egg teachers in four years. And we hung on and I actually... I was a district officer and I received my state farmer's degree. But it was a challenge. But I think now, when things are this way, you have a good instructor and somebody that cares, it's easier for these kids to go on and do it. So, any other questions?
Appreciate you coming. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to present this to you guys. And we'll go from there.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Moving down, reports and communication. We do not have a student rep here. And do we have any board committee reports?
Facility's merit, but we're going to hit that committee agenda, so.
Okay. As you can see, when we have one less board member at this time, we also have some openings on the committee. If everyone is okay, I will take on that curriculum, we technology open spot. I will learn something.
I'm sure.
And I did ask Luke to move up one stage from being the alternate on the transportation committee to being the direct liaison for that. And he said okay to that. So, those two changes. Anybody else that sees anything that they could be of assistance on, please plug in. If not to me, to Mr. Sampson or to Lori, and just let them know of your interest in these committees. I'm throwing it out there because it's probably a little premature to ask for commitments right now. But no other committee conversation? Let's move on to administrative board reports. Elementary school, do we have a... Out there, do we have...
No.
Nothing, you've been pretty quiet.
The principals this month, and they are all this month.
Who'd like to take care of middle school, high school, technology, CD and activities? How was your summer?
Just a little bit. We've been busy, just a few updates here. In regards to the gym project, and we can go down after the end of the meeting too. The wall padding and the graphic inside the gym is scheduled to be installed tomorrow. Originally, they were going to take four days and send two guys to do it. But now, they're sending four and they're all going to hammer it all out late tomorrow night. So, we're going to have a full day tomorrow. Bleachers are still tentatively scheduled for the week of August fifteenth. Waiting for confirmation on that here very soon. Track lines were painted today and we think, hopefully, we let community back on there on Wednesday afternoon. Okay, and it's looking really nice. So, thanks to the community for their cooperation and giving that time to cure. Fall registration for our athletics and activities is now open. That'll get blasted out here as a reminder for everybody here. Tomorrow, when afternoons returns, we're also... This will also get blasted out. We're going to have a fall pack meeting, parent, athlete, coach, Wednesday, August third at six thirty PM. So, more details to come with that. And last time we met, when I gave the presentation, I shared the quote for the odd, but I didn't have any proofs. We now have since had two proofs. Will you pull those up?
Correct one, which one you want first, or does it matter?
Does matter. So, pretty, pretty bold graphic at the top here. This is what they sent out. Now, it fits right inside. All the pillars up to the top. And on the bottom, it shows... We need to get confirmation. There is a fourth red banner somewhere over there to the left. We believe it says speech. I don't, again, don't have all those details yet. When I play music in this last one, it's theater. And this is kind of showcase of different pictures if we've... A lot of the language that we use here, if we've talked about this, facilities committee meeting or at board meetings, of kind of the vision that has started this is the Lake City and the Pine Island with all of their individual pictures outside their gyms. So, those would be small tidbits of it. If you go to the option, the other option, is where they have much more of those graphics where we can really showcase and honor those student participants throughout the years. The top is exactly the same. It's just the difference in that bottom. And there is different UV protection layers within those graphics that we need to get ironed out as well because if you see the difference of the color of the two doors, that is from the summer.
Is there a difference in price between the two?
No.
No?
Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah.
So... Read what? Are those local pictures on this exam?
So, what we do is we get Fol and Cal to submit a bunch of pictures that they have throughout the years. And the company will put them together in a type of a graphic. And folks will be able to stand outside and just kind of scour and look to see.
Like a collage through the years.
Yeah, it'll be sent back to the... How we're far back, they had pictures.
And my preference and recommendation is that we would do this one with a number of pictures simply for the reason that we've always discussed that our vision for that gym hallway, when we do that down the road, is it would have those pictures as well so that we're equitable in what we're showcasing. Yeah, we waited a long time for it, but this is a company that, this is what they specialize in doing. Very happy with what they've shown us thus far.
When we move from here, there's choices for us to make and there's no action item. Is... Do we need to make any decisions?
No, just wanted to show that finally you've received that proof that it's already gone through facility committee the first time around.
Looks good. How did your, how did your summer activities go for CD?
Um, yeah, we've been busy all around, for sure. And we can talk more about field else as we kind of get to that part, but yeah.
And we had discussed, by the way, walking down to check out the gym project when we're done. So, please feel free to accompany if done or anyone who wants to. Operations, maintenance, sir?
Just a typical summer, you know, painting, scrucing the place up, going room to room. A lot of staff changes, so a lot of room changes. But otherwise, we've been focusing on really taking, getting that gym project done. We've had a lot of work. We're in there daily, trying to get things done, waiting for the next contractor to come in and do their, their deal. So, between that, the track, all the other things we have going on, and really starting to prepare for next year, we've been very busy, but it's just a typical summer of just being very busy and not enough time. And before I know it, kids will be back there.
Back in the day, I'm certainly myself, but there was a CETA program which allowed us to have summer employment for our kids within the school. How are you supplementing this summer with?
We use community kids from college. They come back from school and they spend the summer here. And we have some high school kids that are working for me. And we typically do that every summer, anywhere from three to forty, even five kids, just because a lot of them won't maybe go through the whole summer. So, we may be replacing with someone else. But we've continued to do that for the last, you know, nine years. Well, I've been here every summer. So, it's worked out well. And what's really nice is when you have some kids that come back every year. They know the routine, they know what's going on. It makes it easy for training. So, we've been real fortunate. A lot of times, a brother or sister comes up, then they want to replace the brother or sister that's leaving, so.
There's been a lot of lack of employees this summer wherever you go.
Yeah.
Do you find that with your group or not so much?
We've had a couple hires at the end of the school year last year that worked out really well. But, I mean, there's always room, so if you don't want anyone.
Thank you. Any other questions for either activities or operations? Moving along to the stoop report.
Well, I just got a couple of things here. We are moving from a schematic design to a more detailed design in our project. We are still on pace to get the construction documents ready for bid in November, early December timeframe. We want to remind people, and I put that article in paper also this past week about making sure that people remember that we are starting early this year on August twenty-second. And so, that was important to get that reminder out there as well. COVID update, really nothing much new on a COVID front. We will start the year as the end of the year. As far as I'm concerned right now, we're still addressing the changes between right now and the next month. And then, back to school. Obviously, we are starting early. Workshops will be that week of August fifteenth. We will have new teacher workshops and regular staff development opportunities. And then, we begin right away on August twenty-second. The great news is, is that we're out in the middle of May for following year, so. Other than that, do you guys have questions?
Anything? Okay, thank you. Public input, comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers, and people with children in the district, plus employees of the district that must relate to school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in discussion during the comment period, but will take information and find answers if appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with building administrators and/or the superintendent. As part of the board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassinations at a board meeting. Having said that, mouthful, is anyone who wishes to speak to the board about any topic with school concerns? We're closed. Moving on to consideration of the finance report. Mr. Davidson?
Yep. Actually, the cash flow worksheet, and as we talked at the last meeting, this is now extended through this fiscal year. So, it's also a report you've consistently seen each board agenda. Up at the top, the bank balances as of the date the agenda was posted for Community Resource and Merchants. One note, I guess, is that July thirtieth, that ideas payment you'll see are rather small in terms of what our normal ideas payments would be. And that's typical of the payments in July fifteen and July thirtieth as we received property tax, second half payment, or first half payments in May. And then, there's some kind of a reconciling mechanism with the state as they close out and do our ninety percent in the current year versus a ten percent from the final year. So, you'll see as you go down a bit further down the middle of the sheet in August on the fifteenth, the ideas payment is larger than normal. And that's where we're getting some of those funds that were held back from the prior year coming to the fiscal year. So, just kind of a note as you see some of the variances and some of the revenues coming from the state of Minnesota. Typically, beginning of the fiscal year, you're going to see some payments go out the door as maybe leases renew or debt service payments are due. Our debt service payments are set to happen twice during the year. Once in August, once in December, sorry, usually end of January. January is an interest and principal payment. The ones in August are an interest-only payment. And that's just typically how school district financing is set up. So, those payments that went out for debt service would be interest-only. You'll see that when we get to the expenditure portion. Couple of other things you'll see, bus, we have some bus purchases. We've talked in terms of trying to get our vehicles into a fleet of purchasing buses each year. Purchase one bus each year and have one bus on a lease. So, we're turning over that fleet of eighteen buses every fifteen years. It's been kind of recommended from our transportation group that, you know, a bus and most vehicles, you know, if you've got one for fifteen years, it's probably seen its time. And school buses just have all that much more use on it too. But if we can get our fleet turned over in fifteen years, we feel pretty comfortable of the safety and also the reliability of those vehicles. You'll see some van purchases. A lot of times, the vans are used in conjunction with the buses to pick up students that maybe have either special transportation needs or IP needs through special ed. And those are twelve-year services, all we can have for those vehicles in a public school setting. So, we'll see replacement of those. And that usually happens in the, began the fiscal year too, as new budgets are opened up. Further down the sheet, about, probably about two-thirds of the way down, the two thousand twenty-two A CCC roof. And that's part of the overall project that will be taken care of next summer. Without important with the roof that's leaking, that we get that done as soon as possible. So, the bids were set out for that. ISG did the planning and design on it. Garland will be coming in in September to put a new roof on that section at the CCC, so some cost in there. As we get closer to having the schematic and design all figured out and we get kind of a draw schedule put on for the project, you'll see more and more inflows and outflows for that project as it now such in the, in some trust and investments with healers. We're able to get those funds early. The important part, I guess, for that is we're able to earn interest on that until the project happens, as most of you know, in your home budgets that things just cost more right now. So, the more interest we can earn on that, those funds before the project, the better chance we'll have to help support that project when it comes time to go as well. This is just the cash flow that goes through September thirtieth. You probably don't want to see all the documents, but do have it through the entire fiscal year. And the important part, as we've talked about in the past, is that we're good for cash flow and not having to do any cash flow borrowing. There have been times in the past where we had to do, you know, basically borrowing in anticipation of aid being received. But we're seeing cash flow positive throughout the fiscal year. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask or answer whenever I can.
Josh, I was looking at the food service remodel. Is that the elementary?
Yeah. Yeah, so at the elementary, knocked down the wall between the cafeteria workers and the students. And that'll be replaced now with some portable units similar to what they have at the high school. But they're at a more appropriate level for that age of student. So, folks will be able to get trays here instead of here. And so, they're, they've got that half wall knocked down. They've got, we've got the units in, so that's all part of that project. And a real, you know, there are always positives and negatives with everything that happens. With having the free or supported lunch and breakfast, food service has done really well the last couple of years because we get reimbursed at a much higher rate from Fed when that happens. So, we're able to get larger amount of funds into the food service. We don't want and we can't have that food service be in deficit, for one, because you're going to general fund transfer if that happens. But you also don't want an excess of balance in food service. But you want to be able to take care of your needs. And that is definitely a need in that building to have a more appropriate line for the students to be served. So, I always thought those are good uses of those funds.
Thank you.
You bet.
Now, the roof, the CCC roof, did you say that's a portion of that project or a portion of?
Not, portion of the overall building project. So, within that, the question that went out for the bond, a portion of that was a CCC roof. We're able to get that handled this summer rather than next summer when the rest of the project happens.
Little of both.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it was covering that whole CCC roof.
The whole section of the gym.
Which means, yeah, right, a whole portion of it is replaced.
Correct.
And Josh, just a clarification on that CCC expenditure. The bond revenue will backfill that, right? Because right now, it looks like it's just coming out of our cash.
Yeah, so what I have, like, probably about a quarter of the way down, you'll see a two thousand twenty-two A project reimbursement. We've had funds go out and usually you'll see a bill to ISG that's going to be your highest expenditure when you look through them.
Gotcha.
So, we have items like that when we need to, especially for our cash flow, because we don't earn as good interest as healers are able to. But we need to reimburse ourselves on those funds, so it does all wash itself. Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else for Josh? If not, I look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown. Bill? On the motion? Katie on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are carried. Consent agenda, items under the consent. Opposed? We are carried. Consent agenda, items under the consent, consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any particular item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff, we usually start with you and the recognition of the resolution of yes.
Yes, we have two donors this month. The first one is from the Mankato Area Foundation for $1,000 to our golf program, and also an anonymous donor of $75 for classroom supplies and board helpers. And we thank our donors that will be to each month for their generosity.
Anyone have anything they'd like to review or discuss under the consent agenda? When you look at things that you need to, I would look for a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, the motion by Katie, seconded by Bill, for the approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. No old business, under new business. On an annual basis, we provide goals for our superintendent. He assists us with that goal management. And we do a mid-year eval, and we do a year-end eval. And I ask you to send your, send your analysis to me regarding Jeff's performance, both at the mid-year and at the year-end, so that he has something to build on. So I'll just read you a narrative that, putting all the information together, this is what I came up with on your behalf. Pursuant to the school board responsibility, we are submitting our annual review of the superintendent Sampson's job performance. Jeff has agreed upon three goals previously. The job of superintendent is to be our CEO, handling the day-to-day requirements of school operation. You are in large part the face of our district. According to individual board evaluation, you have fulfilled all the goals in an effective manner. Board members feel steps in marketing our district have been very positive. While we are on the right path, we need to continue to show and build our combination of activities and academics to our taxpayers and interested potential students and family. Our financial picture continues to improve under your guidance. All members reported confidence in your leadership as evidenced by the increasing fund balance. During our COVID pandemic, you conveyed information to both the board and the COVID advisory team. You provided an informational link between all of the health entities and gave us valuable insight on ESER funding. One of your goals of communication was completed well. We passed a referendum bond issue by an overwhelming majority. Informational meetings provided to our community gave them an opportunity to engage in an open Q and A session, and they provided by giving the district the support it needed. Grammar. You met the communication and leadership goal as well. As a board, we support our choice of Mr. Sampson as our CEO slash superintendent, and look forward to his continued commitment to the school district. And that, that was the information I pulled together. And one of your leadership abilities, I think we all feel like, is your ability to pull everybody together, very much recognized by the COVID issues that we've had. But we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the support staff that you had, including your district office staff, and our educators in general, which we're very proud of our academic achievements. We're very proud of the number of activities that we're able to give our students and the wide variety relative to other schools our size. So, Mr. Sampson, we believe you're doing a very good job for us, and we look forward to reevaluating and looking for some goals we got coming here. Excuse me for all my throat. So we're completed with that. I don't know if you, anybody have any comments here?
That's a good read.
Ask them my pleasure, sir.
Okay, one A is a consideration to appoint a school board clerk position. We have a finite number of people available for that position, and we have one in particular who's worked very well in the past as our clerk. If you would accept the clerk position.
Yes.
I would like to have a motion and a second, and if there's any further discussion, we can go forward with that. Consideration to approve a school board clerk position. We need a nomination and a second for Katie. Bill on the nomination, Brenda on the second. Okay, any other discussion? Thank you for getting this forward. No other discussion. All in favor of appointing Katie Lochner as a school board clerk, heads and school board clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number two, a consideration to approve the 22, 23 goals.
We talked a little bit about these in my evaluation session, and I proposed these goals. Obviously, you guys need time to think about the goals for that. The goals are listed out here. The first one is to host information sessions in school finance. This has been kind of an ongoing topic, I guess, and we kind of made humor about it within our strategic planning, is having Jeff talks instead of the delanted Ted talks. We'll have Jeff talks on school finance as a way to educate the community on what school finance is and how it works. Obviously, I would have a trusting right-hand person while doing this by the name of Mr. Davidson back there. But we would probably start from a broad perspective about how school finance works and really kind of digging the topics in there. We go through these sessions. I'm sure we will probably take input and questions that we can expand upon at our next session as we go through that. My thoughts would be that we could maybe meet quarterly, maybe before a board session where we have sort of a presentation, if you will, and that way you guys can attend as well on those nights and maybe learn a little bit yourself. School finance is a very tough topic. I don't know all the answers, but I know who to call. You know, I know enough about, obviously, revenue expenditures and levies and how they work, but I don't know all the answers. There's a ton of statutes and everything else dealing with it, but we know who the experts are to call upon. And so that's kind of my vision for that. Performance goal number two, we have a big project coming up. This time, or this next summer, I should say. It's going to be starting this summer with the CCC roof. There will be a lot going on with that. Obviously, we're still in design, and we have to go through construction bidding and then preparing for the actual project to begin when school ends in the middle of May next year, and then it's the managing of the day-to-day items for that the following summer. And finally, goal three would be the continued implementation of our current Cannon Falls area school strategic plan, which I think would be good to review again next month if Lori would put that as a reminder, pull that back up. Obviously, things did not stay on track during the pandemic, because those are one of the things that you don't plan for when you're doing strategic planning. One of the things that we need probably start talking about as a board is, we created this strategic plan my first year, and this is going to be starting my fourth year. Here, and when is a good time to look at that and say, okay, we've gotten everything flushed out of the strategic plan, up there where we want, and we want to start going down the path of creating a new strategic plan and shooting for some more stars, if that makes sense. Thoughts, comments?
Well, I think we talked a little bit about it last time, that, you know, reviewing it, bringing it up to date, because a lot of those things didn't get addressed.
Right.
During COVID, and where are we on some of those items? And then kind of flushing some of that out.
Right.
I don't know that we're necessarily in a position to start a new one.
Oh, no, no. I think it's a good idea to review where we're at.
Review and.
Yep, absolutely.
Are these the actual goals or just more like topics?
They're not written as SMART goals right now, and I think that's part of the discussion, you know, that we can certainly have.
I really feel good about number one, because districts take criticism all the time, and certainly finance and budget is right up the top. And I'm not sure if people understand how money is spent, how little, how little we have input on so much of our budget. And I think this would be just excellent. I'm wondering if you were going to put it out in a social media type of setting, or if you're just going to have a live presentation? But I guess.
I thought we'd go with live presentations to begin, but, you know, and maybe do them quarterly, like I mentioned, either half hour, two hour before a board meeting. Have people come and listen, maybe do a small presentation, and then have the audience ask questions. That might spur more conversation for future education. And if we hear something that we can do, a Jeff talk on video, if you will, and put that out. I'm seeing a lot of head shaking in the audience, but I'm sure there won't be a lot of participation behind the cameras. But yeah, I think that's a, that's a great idea, and it's something that you can obviously build upon, and then it goes for, obviously, on our, on our website, from those conversations, whether it's the quarterly meetings or the Jeff talks, or sitting by the fire and, you know, talking through school finance.
You have to buy a dog that can sit next to you.
Well, right, I already got a dog. I wouldn't sit there very long.
Yeah, I think there's a very dual on a personal level, and I would look at just seeing all of the project management technique that goes without saying.
And I can sharpen those up to try to put them into some sort of a measurable role, whether it's staying on budget for the project, or, you know, making sure that, obviously, I can't control everything with the costs and everything, but we will come in budget, whether it looks what we intend to be or not, depending on where things are after prices.
So are you looking for us to come with additional bullet points here, or is that something that you?
Well, I think it's just a conversation, you know, right now. And we can certainly finalize it next month if you guys have additions that you want to add. You know, with the, with the school finance, for example, we can do quarterly and, you know, some social media ones that we can send out via social media and add into our website for people to communicate.
In the event somebody wants to either add a performance goal for our next conversation or enhance what we have here, they should just make some contact with you by email under guests and just say, I'd like to see this as part of the goals.
Yep.
And maybe we're missing something on our list of priorities, but.
Sure. I would prefer to keep it at the most three. You know, if we get sort of five or six, and then comes a, a hard demand.
How to beat those three.
Yeah, I think all three of them are good. I think, you know, from the last one we just completed, you know, the marketing, communication, if we can bring them into something, maybe as a subset on the.
I got a great marketing story that I just learned this past Thursday, just to tell you something about how social media is and we're streaming. I was playing golf with an ex-board member of mine from the south last week. And he goes, yeah, I was watching Valley Sports North one night and watching the Twins. And he goes, lo and behold, a commercial came up, and it was advertising for Cannon Falls area schools, telling, you know, how great the school is and where to go. And, but he lives in Dexter. And it makes sense, obviously, if it's around here, but with Valley Sports North, the streaming service, it goes to water, and it's no extra cost, because that's what they're promoting at the time, and especially during like the Twins. And so just that small little nugget. And I know our social media, I opened up my ESPN app just to check the Twins score the other night, and a little banner down there, it, you know, had our advertising for Cannon Falls schools. And so, and we've been getting, I think we've gotten at least six or eight hits on our inquiry about setting up a tour. So it's, it's out there working, of course. So we're pretty happy with that. Yeah, you're right. Continuing.
Continuing, maybe as a subset of the narrative.
Well, that's like a very, very good stuff. Information sessions on, just on school finance could almost be a subset of communications or budget plans.
Almost taking what's in the strategic plan still, and then having subcategories of communication from the.
That's like an actual.
School. Yeah, we could lay it out like that. I mean, the current project management falls under financial facilities as well. It's in our strategic plan.
Team, this is, this shows us in an action item.
Right. That's the answer.
Yeah.
So we can table it for more.
August. What more do you think?
For more, yeah.
But if this is, if this is the general direction, you guys want to.
Yeah, I like the, I like the.
Yeah, we like the content.
Yeah, just kind of make it more, like you said, measurable.
Sure. Absolutely. All right.
Move that table?
Should make a motion to, second.
Move by Bill to table, seconded by Brenda, until a subsequent meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor of tabling the superintendent goals to a subsequent meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Discussion and possible action regarding an open school board seat. When Rebecca left us, it was my thought, and I thought reinforced, that we should be able to limp into the next election without the additional board member. We subsequently have learned that we need to appoint someone, and that would be from now, if I've got my times right. If we do it this evening, they have 30 days before they're elected or appointed. If we discuss, then it becomes the issue in August to be appointed in September. So what we're asking is for some guidance here as to what we're going to do, and with the understanding that this potential appointee would only be with us until the beginning of the year, right? Until election time, beginning of the year.
January.
Correct.
So.
Depending if they file.
Unless they file.
And they win, then they'll continue on. If they don't file, then the new person would start. If they file and don't win, there's a bunch of different dynamics, but, yeah, we do have to make some attempts to fill this seat.
And so I'm laying it out to you. My personal feeling is, the sooner the better. And we can play this out for an extended period in time if you wish to, but there has been one person that has at least requested consideration, if you will. Now, possibly there's others because this one person had, had just said, if open, I would, I would like to be considered. So, you know, it's, it's good to get a maximum amount of balance in, just in my opinion. We have three folks in here that don't currently have kids in the district. We have three folks in here that don't currently have kids in the district. We have two that do. I think it's kind of important to have that balance, you know, if, I think there's a statistic that 60 or 70% of the people in our school district do not have kids currently. So it's, it's the majority. So I'm just looking for some feedback and what you all personally think.
Well, I think we could go back and do the same application that you went through last time, but I don't think it really makes a whole lot of sense at this point.
Based on the time.
Based on the time. We had individuals that were involved in that, that in one made reference to inquire. And so it's my, my feeling that we appoint and let that individual work through to November. And then at that point, hopefully signs up for the election next, what is it, second? Application, I guess, second.
On the second.
And then the election, you know, the voters continue on with that question. So I had a question, Lori. With the regular election, there's three seats. And then it'll be Rebecca's as a two-year term. And the potential appointee could file for either one.
They could file for either one.
But if you have several individuals that filed for the three terms, you take the top three. But if it's the two-year term, there's only going to be the.
One winner.
One winner.
Correct.
Okay.
You have to, you have to declare.
You have to declare which one you want.
Yes.
You have to be clear what you're.
Yes, and it's, so I just thought it was important to put that in there. That's what I thought, so.
So you'd be in favor of immediately appointing someone, is what you just said?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, my concern is this because in the last public meeting, we said we were not appointing anyone. So other people don't realize that we are going to do that. So other people haven't had the opportunity to come forward.
True.
I, maybe we don't have time to go through a formal application process like we did before, but it seems like we need to get that out publicly.
That people know.
Publicly, because more people might step forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that was, I thought I had, but when, when we threw it out at the last meeting, that we weren't aware that I needed to fill that slot. And if we go another month, that's another month.
Month before then, they can't.
And this person has inquired already, made contact with Bob, and is interested in the running. So I feel let's jump on it. Think you think it shows the action and move forward and so on.
Yeah, with the 30-day waiting, it really drags it out because if we wait another, we don't have another meeting. Unless we have a special meeting. Another meeting until August 25th, and then it'll be another 30 days.
Right.
Get to the September, end of September, the Thunder would be seated. And that would be after.
Well, it'd be, it'd be September and October, and then we're already at the election.
At the election.
And so.
It'll be after the final period, too.
And after the final period.
That would be appointments.
So that's, that's my view, that we actually get someone started and fill the position. Hopefully get their deep web understanding a little bit about what's going on. And then hopefully is able to continue on.
Yeah, I kind of agree. I think we kind of, we owe it to the community to have another opinion on the board. You know, if we, if we push this out, we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna keep passing things. And if we don't have a full board, I don't know if that looks great, you know? And with the time, time in the summer, so if we had to put together an application process, I don't know.
Not a formal process, right?
The person that reached out to me was Jolynn Means-Williams. And she reached out to me unsolicited. I didn't make any contacts with anybody or anything like that, so. So she would be the person that we would be going to discuss with. So I guess we heard from everyone here.
Well, Jolynn was one of the people who expressed interest or had quite a lot of information. She did have a strong application.
So I would, I would nominate Jolynn Williams to fill the empty seat. They dated by right of opinion.
We are making this a discussion item and you're nominating Jolynn to fill that spot.
Change in action. Change in action.
Discussion and possible action, which I think we could make it an action item.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Motion by Bill, seconded by Luke, to appoint Jolynn Williams to fulfill the open board seat until election time.
Do you have noted that Jolynn is here tonight?
So I think it's incumbent on us to see if she still feels the same way.
I do, and I appreciate the nomination.
So is there any other discussion? I would like the clerk to make a roll call vote. The yes vote would be for the exception, for the acceptance of Jolynn Williams as a board member.
All right, Bill?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. Jolynn, congratulations. Make the next meeting. You'll be installed at that point of time, one of these things.
Actually, 30 days is August 25th, so you'll miss that next meeting. But if you were to call a special meeting or anything like that, she would be on as of August 25th, seated.
I just figured the next.
No. No. It'll give it that date.
It's the time of the meeting.
Yes.
Do we need anything more than that? 30 days.
30 days.
30 days. Be patient.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving along. Resolution to approve the tennis court agreement with the City of Cannon Falls. Been negotiating that thing for three years, huh?
This has been an ongoing discussion since I think the first day that I got here. And started talking about facilities and everything else. And at the time, Dave Maroni and I started talking about being the city administrator. Obviously, COVID happened, Dave moved on, got a new person involved. By the time we got to this part, we now have finally an agreement set up with the city. Dave's agreed to it as well. The city has already passed this as part of their part. Both administrators, myself and the city administrator, couldn't really believe there's nothing been written down over the years about this piece. And so we were both glad to put this down in handwriting of the intent, I think, of both boards and the city council at the time to codify the agreement to share facilities over time. And so I don't know why it wasn't written down before, but we've gotten it to the point of people that knew the history of it. And we kind of put this document together where the, in a sense, the city will pay a quarter of the expenses and maintenance of the tennis courts over time. So, but this is a year-to-year agreement, just like John Birch's. And so we'll have this come back through the board and the city.
Yeah, this came up with facilities and through the John Birch Park conversation. And it's just time to get it on paper. And Neil was great about it, about agreeing that we both kind of shared. And they have some stick in the game, too, so. It was really a nice issue to have with the city, too.
Many years ago, the pool was the tennis courts, where they'd now, then I'll play basketball. And I was there for years. Whenever you'd see a ball tennis tournament, it would be down there. Great positioning for me, I could sit on the hill and watch tennis. But with time, there was a general agreement that it should move up here and more of a verbal conversation going on that we should do it and, you know, we'll help out kind of thing. But like Jeff said, never on paper. And this puts it on paper, I think it's a, it's a good deal to put it on paper. I'd like to see a third, but I'm greedy. So tell me what your thoughts are. Other than that, if you don't have any, accept agreement. I would look for a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Luke on the motion, Brenda on the second. Other discussion?
All right.
All in favor? Is this a, is this a resolution?
No, it's just a.
Well, I thought it's a resolution.
No.
You have one coming up, but not quite yet.
We'll get to your resolutions come out by then.
We have a motion, the second on the floor, to approve the tennis court agreement with the City of Cannon Falls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve field house usage and FOB access form.
Speaking of a longstanding concern, I guess is the best way to put this. We've been working on this in our facility committee as well. Chief concerns coming from community members is that they were promised more access to the field house when the FOB was passed. I think initially, if I remember correctly, it was open 24/7 to begin with. And then there was issues within the field house, numerous issues that kind of escalated into liability issues for the district. And so that's where the district has come to have some concerns of itself of really, I don't know if clamping down is the right answer or not, but really reducing our liability as a district. Because whether people want to hear it or not, we do, there's people in the community that want the facility taken care of, not damaged, and also not have kids get hurt in there or worse. And so I think we need to find a happy medium. Through discussions with our facility committee, we did come up with, I think, is a good start to that happy medium and will help ease some of these concerns. Prior to this, we had come up with an idea for security of using FOBs and handing them out to the community for certain times that they can be used for walkers, for example, that wanted to use the field house earlier than what people arrived to. It helps with security during the day when students are here. That same concept was applied to the field house to help extend the hours of the field house. Whereas we will have set hours for that field house when people are here or probably more than, it's just the routine cleaning when we have custodial crews here. But with the extension of it, we were asking community members to come in and get a FOB from the Activities Community at Office. And if you wish to have access up until the extended hours of the field house, we are more than happy to do that for you. But that does come with responsibility that if you are bringing a group with you, that is great. And we want you to do that, but there's a responsibility with having that FOB and who you let into that building. And we're not blocking doors open for other kids to come in and that aren't supervised and damage the field house will get hurt. It's kind of the gist of it. I don't know, for you, you want to speak a little word for Dave?
So with this form, we just started with, this was essentially the logistics of that morning walkers FOB form, that they would come in and get it, and so we just expanded on it. I think we could probably get rid of the second vehicle line item there just above, just to clean some things up. But we discussed that facility in the last meeting of going down to ages 12. And anybody that does not have that driver's license, that would have that parenting guardian complete their, that form and be responsible for that. And the first dollar is free at no cost. And if they lose a FOB or they damage a FOB, they'll want to get that second one. But there will be a $10 cost to that. And that just came as a result today because of the price of the FOBs has gone up with everything.
I think one thing to note there, too, is the FOBs do cost money. So we're willing to give one, you know, so we're, you know, I just don't want people to see this as limiting access. Or you can have it. If you want to do this, you can have it and it's at our expense, so. I appreciate that because I certainly think we could charge, but whether or not.
And so what we're talking, referencing here now with this FOB access is the 4:30 to 9:00 PM. That's what we're saying, from 6:00 to 4:00 would be over like.
And I think it's good to note as well is that there were certain days throughout the year that it was closed. And we are going to 20, or, you know, 365 days a year of having it be 6:00 AM to 4:00 AM. And then 4:30 to 9:00 PM. And so I think we've talked through those things and came to a, what I think is a good common sense agreement. I think, and a lot of these hours are, again, predicated on when our staff leaves at night and what they are able to accomplish and giving them a fair shot at making sure because, of keeping the facility clean as well. If we, if we go to 10 o'clock, that only gives our custodians an hour to clean that area. Whereas if we go two hours, it gives them a lot better shot at doing that and keeping it up toward the convenience experience as well.
Little question on the, when there's events going on, like volleyball games, you know, it's obviously after 4:00 PM. Are they allowed to, are we gonna allow?
We've talked through that.
Yeah, so if you want to just go over to the next page, please. So the priority for the usage right there would be our events first. And then we'll go to rentals. And then the third would be that you have to use open gym. And I think what we talked about, please refresh my memory, is that volleyball, once Dave's staff has basically cleared that, taken on all the eventing system and the equipment and everything, gotten everything put away, then it would be back available for the FOB usage.
I think that's the key word for the FOB usage.
It wouldn't be the door open, it would be the FOB usage because we would be after that 4:30 time slot.
Right, and tell when there's a, when there's a, like a varsity event going on.
Right.
And people go in.
If they're already in the building for the varsity event. And the kids go over there, because that happens a lot.
FOB usage.
Yeah.
FOB usage.
There'd be FOB doors for the field house.
Oh, so the field house doors will be locked by FOBs?
Yep.
The inside one?
Yep.
Yeah. They're off the FOB to get into the.
And so the key, I think we're talking one across from the way room, right?
Yes, that would be the one.
So there was a digital signage TV that was installed that was purchased by Ed Foundation through Mr. Hodges. And so the ultimate goal, the necessity that we need to have is we need to have our FS, our facility schedule and calendar on that saying, you know, July 25th, Court One is junior high volleyball game. Court Two, or, excuse me, Court One would be a CFY fourth grade girls' basketball practice. Court Two would be a JO volleyball practice. Court Three's open and available for open gym, along with the track that'd be open.
Right.
So that, but again, it would be, we would give those renters of CFY and JO a FOB. And then again, it would be FOB access. So you'd have to FOB to get in door nine or 11. Then you'd see the TV screen and then you would FOB inside the door to the field house. Again, the one across from the way room, so closer to door one.
And I think maybe what you're saying more is we have a varsity game in our main gym and there's nothing going on in there, am I right?
Right, yeah.
And parents want to take their kids down there and FOB them in?
Come get them up, right.
Come get FOB.
See, at that point, at least we know that the parents are with the kids.
Yep.
And they're responsible for that. And they're responsible for that.
They're responsible for that. And that, that's what we needed.
We know who is signed in.
Yep.
I think the accessibility to this, anybody who's been around a long time knows that I've been complaining about this because I think that was a commitment to the community, maybe not a commitment, but just saying you're gonna have, we're gonna have good access to this. And I've always thought that, I used to play hoops in my hometown on Thanksgiving Day in the evening with buddies. And to have that accessibility and be able to have people come in and walk and use that at their time, I think is a really good step forward. Dave, one of the, one of the things when I was asking for requesting that we open it up was your concern about not having a supervisor or a custodian on duty at great cost because it's a Christmas Eve or something like that?
Yeah.
As far as the maintenance crew, when somebody, when somebody uses their FOB, do you have major concerns about the possibility of problems?
You know, the future can only tell us if that's gonna be a problem or not. The bottom line is, is on those particular holidays, my staff is not contracted to work, there's no one available. If something happens, my staff is not available, so that is a concern. If there is a mess made, if something happens, someone's overexerting themselves or something, it could be two or three days before my staff finally gets back there. So yeah, there, there is a bit of a concern. But you know, we're just gonna play it by ear and give it a try and just see what happens.
The two, the two overriding concerns I have is age twelve eligible for a FOB. That just seems too young for me to, to have that young kid be committed, a sixth grader.
I think it depends on the kid.
What it does?
And the parent who makes that decision and, and it just, because obviously the, most parents aren't gonna want to be shelling out extra ten dollars because their kid keeps losing the FOB or they're, or they don't want to be responsible. Because ultimately, the parents are still responsible for a twelve year old.
Well, I think the form needs to be updated to have a signature of the parent taking responsibility.
It will, it will.
If they don't have a driver's license, or seriously, if they have a driver's license, you want the parent to sign? So, okay.
Even with the driver's license?
Which brings me to my second statement. Ten bucks? Kid loses a FOB, ten bucks? Geez, if they can consistently go back and say, yeah, I lost my FOB again, my mom gave me ten bucks, here you go. I propose we make it much more that it's a little bit painful if you don't understand the FOB process. I would look at fifty or a hundred to be real.
How much does it cost?
Well, it's not just the FOB that you have to consider. Number one, those, those have gone up about three dollars apiece, they're a little over seven dollars apiece, if I'm not mistaken, Josh. But it's also the software, the hardware and the time and money. It's a lot of money to get the system to work and it's a lot of work. So I can't give you an exact dollar amount, but it's not just the FOB.
I think huge reservations about it on a personal level and maybe that's just me, but I think if we put a number like fifty on there, that's gonna be a more concern. And when the kid gets back home, they're gonna say, where's the FOB? And you know, to me, I...
It increases that responsibility too with those younger people because they know.
Yeah, I, I kind of like the forty dollar.
Yeah, maybe forty.
Yeah.
Because, because they lose it, doesn't mean they have the one year suspension, you know, they're not ruining things. Yeah, they should keep a close eye on their FOB, but we can, soon as we know it's lost, right, we can end that access.
We can, yes. Please keep in mind, FOBS are not easy to get anymore.
Sure.
So we have a supply and we have, there's gonna be some issues potentially. So we really want them to keep these FOBS, if at all possible. Like everything else, they're just a lot harder to get the computer chips.
I don't want to go too high on this, I still think we want people to use that building.
Well, I don't think that hinders them from using the building.
No, it's just...
Right.
And they're still getting one for free.
But they still get the first one.
Yeah, right, but then, you know, people misplace things.
Oh, I know, I've had the child.
And then if it's fifty dollars, there's a potential for, sorry, you're, I'm not paying for that or I'm not, you know, maybe that's the right move, I don't, I don't know, but I want people using it.
Oh, absolutely.
And you can use it, they get a free FOB. You just gotta pay better attention to the second FOB if it comes that way. You can do whatever you'd like to do as a board, but I'm a fifty dollar guy because I think it really, and especially when you get a thirteen year old kid who might be very responsible but doesn't quite know where it is and his duffel bag and it's long since gone now. Just, just my two cents where. First of all, do you approve, would you approve the field house usage based on, this is a facility move, right? Extracurricular, you guys have walked through that?
Yeah.
So that part's okay and the FOB access form, that looks good to you?
Why?
I agree, yeah.
I, I had a question because it can create a lot of work for you. And so noting that it's gonna be renewed every year, you're gonna get dumped on because you, you start it now and then calendar year, who's gonna do all that work? Have you kind of made some...
Say if you want to share why, we talked about the renewal.
Well, I don't mind the renewal because you do have to have track of it.
Right.
Is there a way to break it down upon your daily normal activities? So I got one today, it's a year ago today, you know, so it comes up in the system possibly as far as renewals. That way you don't have a whole year of a hundred to do.
No, they, they would be staggered to whenever an individual signs out for it.
Well, but it's reading as calendar year, in that way too.
Yeah, and either way, I can do a cutoff on any date and then I can just renew and re-up it on the computer.
So maybe it just needs to read a calendar year from data.
Data issuance?
Issue, or...
I would think so, I mean, um, I, either, either way, I mean, because what if, you know, someone's just coming in at, you know, close to the end of the year and I gotta drive back in and say I've gotta renew again, so.
Right.
I mean, I'm open, I'm open to either, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Or you put a date, you know, like July fifteen.
Well, every year, I mean, as long as there's an understanding that you're not gonna have this week that you're gonna have to renew every one.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And we actually have experienced that before. What you're saying, Bill, is, is correct because it is a lot of work. We used to do it with Cannon Kids.
Yeah.
And as soon as that summer was over or preschool, it was two, three hundred people and yes, that was me. And I'm not a real good typer, so.
And then the, the other question is the TV monitor, who's gonna be responsible for updating that? Because that's gonna be kind of time late, you know, so.
We seem to connect with Principal Hodges about how our FS program will automatically go to them.
Feed into it.
Yeah, so I read that we already have scheduled for, you know, this week, next week.
It's like a live feed.
So like from that H B L like calendar or whatever, like just get it slower?
And our renters, everything would automatically go over there, which is...
So I brought, I knew the renter and I could call and say, why, we found this date, you're gonna be able to tell already it's being used and then...
Yeah.
And then I was just looking at, FOB users are responsible for all guests who enter the field house under their FOB. Just, like I, I think that makes a kind of sense for, you know, I bring in six...
Buddies?
Ten year old, or buddies or ten year old, ten year olds I'm thinking, that, that's great, we want that right. But I, I worry about the twelve year old that meets twelve, ten buddies there and that one twelve year old is not responsible for all those kids.
I, I think it was intended to be parent of that twelve year old.
And that's why, that's why the parent signature from me.
I understand, but I, I would be stupid. I wish we could do a way where, I, I don't know how you do it, but I, I worry about those really dumb kids that also a bunch of buddies show up. How are they gonna tell them no or?
That's a hard one.
That's a hard one and that's part of doing it too.
And parenting.
So what's your pleasure here? Have we, have we really amended anything that's listed here or just had discussion of it?
I think we can go to, I'm okay going to twenty-five or twenty bucks on the renewal of the FOB. Without going too high. Anything else?
I, I would be too. I think ten is a little, a little low for, well, I, you know, my kids would be like, no, we're all just paid for it.
Yeah, that's not enough pain.
No, like twenty-five is...
Twenty-five.
Well, how much money do we have put out already in, in the system? And you're have, you already have a supply of FOBS, so the outlay's already there.
Well, we don't have enough, we have FOBS coming.
Yeah.
So yeah, but yeah, everything is in place, correct? Except for we will be adding a FOB reader to the interior door, so that's...
Huge outlay already, and so.
Yeah.
And we're gonna give away a bunch of free ones and now, I think twenty-five.
If it's a, yeah, last range FOB costs twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
For the first, you know, the first FOB or the second FOB, then if you use it again, it's good for your...
I guess that's a good question is what you said is if a family wants more than one FOB.
Yeah, exactly.
What if they just wanted them?
Mom and dad each want one. You know, and then their twelve year old wants, you know, it may, it may come up and that's why it, just when Brenda said that, it kind of clicked with me.
If their families are doing the field house, I hope that they would communicate with themselves or at least communicate passing the FOB around.
Yeah, but what if you've got...
Siblings.
Different work schedules.
Boys that are all driving, you know, and they all go their own way and separate, yeah, separate schedules, like how do you want to do that, like?
Or when, one of your sons ruined something, but you don't know which.
Which one it was.
Who wanted to do it.
Which family, are you, is it just the families responsible?
At least I have four.
We can, we can beat this up any variety of ways, but I think right now, let's look for a motion and this would appear to be a work in progress, you know, to, to large degree, we're, we're opening this up like we previously have discussed with our community and that's a positive thing. So if there are no...
Just to hit on a quick, I would say this is a really good step. I took a lot of questions on this when we did make the summer hours change and I had no idea where to go and our team was really good about coming up with something so we could have access. And for the people I spoke to in the community, they were, they were pretty happy with this.
Yeah, I, I think that was a previous, like I said, a previous commitment. So who would like to make a motion as, as shown or with the dollar amount amended, but make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve with the amendment of second FOB or last, yeah, second FOB being twenty-five dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the field house usage form as shown and an increase in the FOB access for the second one to twenty-five bucks. Correct, Luke?
Yep.
Perfect.
Well, second being the last, again.
Second being second, yep.
Yep, and further discussion around the second or the third kind of thing?
Third, five years.
No, so you're gonna get the first one for free and now you want a second one because you got the two boys or three boys?
What if it's something that, like if you want a second one, you can pay for it?
That's what I'm saying, so I don't know if you're gonna run out.
That was my concern and that's why I brought it up is because I don't know how many are gonna start coming in.
Right, exactly.
It's always, I've always had the philosophy of start small and then go big. Because if we have a concern that it's not gonna be computer chips, then if you start handing them out like keen or even charging for them, we may run short and that hit, it won't get out to the families. But if each family can have the opportunity to get one, we can maybe over it up to some of those concerns next year.
Yeah, yeah, see where things are at. So we're saying one per family?
One for, one per family for now, but we gotta see how the supply chain's gonna be also.
But it's, and it's open to all the community though too, right? It's not just families or the school.
For the taxpayers.
Okay.
I think you better, you might want to put it as one per household.
Yeah.
Because people will define families.
Family in different ways.
Many houses.
Yeah, one per household.
One per household.
Okay.
Do we need a revision on that?
As an amendment? Was that revision?
Yeah, we need to, we need to change our motion with the one.
One FOB per household.
Yep.
I think we better, Luke, are you okay with amending that?
Yep.
One per household.
I was asking for your parent's signature.
But the last are damaged, twenty-five.
And the expectation that if things free up, you can have a couple.
That would be the talking point, I don't think it needs to go on the document.
Yeah.
So.
I just, I figured it would come to this conversation, that's good lively conversation. We're giving the community more opportunity to use our facility, great thing. So if with period, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the field house usage and a twenty-five dollar fee for a lost or stolen second FOB.
Parent signature.
Parent signature.
And one per household.
One per household.
And one per household. Was that, was that what your motion was?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Right on.
That was your interpretation as well. Okay, we have a motion, a second, we've discussed this. All in favor of the field house usage and FOB access with amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. I hate to be...
Did one of you two get it?
I have it written down.
I have second.
Oh, I have it all written.
I have second, I have second vehicle crossed out, parent signature added with one per household, twenty-five dollars.
Okay, that's exactly the motion.
Yep.
And again, I, I'm lauding this, but fifty bucks. I was, I was gonna push for a hundred, but that would appear to be very down here.
As long as it starts small, we can always go big, it's hard to go backwards.
Okay, that passes by a four one with Britten all voting no. Number seven, consideration to approve the leave request in accordance with teacher master agreement, Article ten, lease of absence, section ten, childcare leave from September sixth to October third and January three to February sixth, twenty-three.
This is for Paul Sinner Shaw and I recommend approval.
By Brenda? I'll say. Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Consideration of approval, leave request, September twelfth to December fourth, twenty-six.
This is for Afton Otto and I recommend approval.
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion? I'll second, seconded by Luke. To approve the leave request for Afton for the days shown. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? We're skipping nine because it's being taken care of under ten, consideration approved at twenty-two, twenty-three, fall head and assistant coaches.
Yeah, just a few vacancies remain, one for that second level girl soccer. We do have a candidate that we'll be interviewing here yet this week. And I did hear from Coach Scott Willerberg about some potential for assistance for the boys soccer. So we'll look to get those addressed here as well. And then in regards to court for the Moonfall Musical, it'll be up to the C how we're gonna proceed, whether we'll use Mike Legmold with band or we'll do a choreographer. We've kind of done one or the other in the past, so. We will get, excuse me, that determined with Vienna and get everything taken care of, and Bill?
Any questions for Reed? Bill has made a motion to approve. I'll second. Seconded by Luke. Motion, a second, to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, fall head and assistant coaches, any other discussion? All in... All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve twenty two, twenty three, one point oh FTE elementary teaching position.
Uh the name here is Brittany Philkins, and I recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Luke?
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? Other local?
Came in local, huh?
Yeah.
I heard what that was.
Motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor of Brittany Philkins as a one point oh FTE for the upcoming year? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the twenty two, twenty four support staff contracts.
Uh we keep making our way through negotiations with all of our support staff, from administrative staff to hourly staff. And what if you guys approve what we have listed tonight? Uh we will have listed the schedules left and leave proposals with them as well, and we'll have that back in August.
It looked like they followed in line with the, with the educators' contracts pretty much.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had, we've been working with the parent professionals the last couple of contracts to get them caught up. We can't do it all at once, obviously. Um but we are in good shape.
Moved by Bill? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of the support, support staff contract for twenty two, twenty four? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the twenty two, twenty three dairy proposals. Jack?
Yep. Uh so we have two bidders for dairy, uh Kemp's and Hastings Creamery. Hastings Creamery is our current provider, uh have been for quite a while. Um actually, it is the first time in a few years that Kemp's put in a, an actual bid. Usually they do a no bid, excuse me, uh each year. Uh both bids are very close, but I've done is uh on the top, it's the fiscal twenty two use, so you'll see uh the one percent of the chocolate are the two. Pine sized milks that we generally serve throughout the district, and you see sixty percent of our kids prefer the chocolate or are drinking more chocolate than than white. Um and then I have on there a five year average that we've used for for milk, so it's about two hundred thousand units uh each year, and again. Uh that could change a little bit depending on uh the day with the kids and what they kind of prefer, but. Um you'll get a cost then based on the bid of each Hastings Co-op or Hastings Creamery and Kemp's. Uh and they both come, there's a three hundred dollar difference between the two on a sixty thousand dollar essential projected use. Uh the big, I guess, takeaway from this for the district is the large increase in milk price from the prior year. Uh it is about a fifty percent increase in milk cost for this year. I think that's what we're gonna see across the board on a lot of things. As costs go up, inflation and shipping and cost of getting products to us, but um. As you'll see there, uh you know, if we're looking strictly at cost and current provider, uh we recommend going with Hastings Creamery. Uh the rest of the data information is more if you really like to get into, you know, how much we use, what the increase was based on, what, you know, it was affected more and impacted more. And then the bottom, uh most of our milk, we've always done on escalator clause, and that just kind of shows what the cost of that escalator clause was for us for the prior year. Uh usually, we come out fairly okay with that um by doing it. Usually, if we do a firm cost bid, uh we end up paying a lot more for milk by the end of the year. Uh cause they have to assume that uh the high end. So the recommendation would be to continue with Hastings Creamery even, uh we have really had no issues with them in the past and good provider. Uh and again, no, and for the board is gonna be assuming that increase in cost for us for dairy for the year.
So other than the cost increase, have they been a good part of Hastings? I mean, as far as getting supply and? I don't know.
We, we've had um a couple of issues recently, but we've been assured that they were, were working to correct them.
Yeah, there was, there was one issue during the year, and it was across the majority of milk providers in general, uh carton issue, uh not strictly just based on Hastings Creamery. Um we just recently, in the last week, with uh summer food program had an issue where they couldn't have product, maybe there's some issues at their machine. Uh Boogie Gun had been kind of uh talked by the company that they had, were supposedly resolved.
Okay.
Josh, have we ever looked at using like a fountain service in comparison?
I have not. I don't know if Lori has ever looked at the bulk.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, not in depth, but. It just isn't something I think we're gonna look at right now. With staffing issues, there's, there is some dynamics to that.
Yeah, it's the cups, but it was just a, a topic that came up in another district that was kind of looking because of the carton issue.
Yeah, I think the, the bulk has its own issues. We would, we would need more staff.
I'll move to approve the Hastings.
Brenda on the motion to approve the Hastings Creamery is our. Our more bidder. Uh for the upcoming school year, and who's our second?
Katie.
Katie, thank you. We have a motion to second on the floor for the acceptance of Hastings. Carry? Any other discussion? All in favor of Hastings Creamery, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the twenty two, twenty three resolution for membership of the Minnesota State High School League. Why do we play video?
Yes, each year, the districts have to train their board members. Um. Anything and everything to do with the state high school league.
Yeah, um this, this video, I believe, is the second year, so those of you that were still here last year, I believe, this is the same one, just over five minutes. Um and a lot of good information for parents, and we'll show this at our PAC meeting here um on August third as well, so. You can watch the video, and I can touch on a couple of things and answer any questions.
I'm going to be a junior this upcoming year, and I play basketball.
Wait, am I supposed to look at the camera?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, why am I going with this? Take two.
I play basketball and volleyball.
This is so weird.
I play baseball, hockey, basketball, I play baseball.
I play basketball and soccer.
I play football, and I run track.
Mainly, I play high school sports to stay in shape.
I play because I have a lot of fun.
I just really have a passion for it.
I play high school sports because it really gave me a pathway into friendships.
I think sports builds character, and by playing sports, I think it just is gonna make me a better person.
It also teaches you life lessons such as like work ethic, integrity, and character.
I've learned that you need to work hard to be able to get places in life.
My team stuff usually win that often, so we learn how to work together, we learn how to like have fun, being a part of a team, I think it's important.
My biggest fan is my mom.
Definitely my mom. I always know that she's out there looking out for me, supporting me.
It's my parents and my grandpa. He says, I love watching you play. You really make your team out there after every game, like even if I didn't play, I'm just helping uh sneak on the bench.
Always after every game, they just say, we, we love watching you play. You're, it's super fun.
Well, first off, just have to say that to all the parents, thank you for putting in the time, but.
Because no one wants their parents yelling at a referee or a coach or even a player.
I'm actually a rough myself for basketball. Getting yelled at is never fun.
I have definitely been a part of teams where the parents are a little crazy.
They're stupid, I guess. I don't know how to work that.
I was at a tournament, and a mom was yelling at her daughter. She was on the other team. She actually made her daughter cry. My whole team felt just bad.
People definitely try and motivate their kids in different ways. The screaming and yelling doesn't really help me personally.
I think parents sometimes, they just get caught up in trying to see their kids be the best that they can possibly be, that can come off kind of wrong because they're so emotionally invested into the sport.
I don't think parents should coach because their coaches are already coaching your kids.
It's not their role. Um the referees are the ones with the whistle.
You know, just give them good, positive things to listen to while they're playing their hearts out on the field.
I wanna see from parents cheering on and picking each other and other kids up, not just your own kid. You wanna pick up the whole team.
Parents need to be respectful of everyone.
I think sportsmanship for parents is honestly just as important as it is for the teammates.
I don't think any real success comes without failure.
Everyone makes mistakes, like you would not be a good athlete if you did not make mistakes.
Just knowing that you put forth your best effort, your best fucking willingness.
Parents need to realize that they're getting better through doing that, and they shouldn't just. Always be so critical, just cheer them on.
There's definitely pressure from your parents, from your teammates, from your coaches to do the best that you can.
I don't actually really like when my parents come to my games. I often tell them not to come to my games, just because like I like to be there to have fun, and I don't want like pressure or anything.
If you take the pressure away a little bit and just let them learn and have fun with it, you will see so much more improvement.
I think a lot of athletes just wanna vent after the game, if it's not going their way or if it did go their way, and personally, I like when my parents just listen.
If I mess up, I know I messed up, so you telling me that it's not necessarily it's gonna help.
If I had that game, I don't have to hear about the negative, because I guarantee I already have been thinking about it the rest of the game.
After a loss, a big loss, you know, you're already down, and you just need the support to get back up, because that's what they're there for. There has been situations where, I mean, they've been upset after the game that I didn't play, and then they said, do you want me to go talk to the coach? I said, no, I can fix it. I'll just show them that I better practice.
I feel like it's, should be the players' job to talk to the coach. It builds character. It's good for you to learn how to communicate how you, how you're feeling with the approaches.
My coach definitely says that there's no I in team. It's all about if we can work as a team, you know, we can do great things.
No, I don't expect to be a professional athlete.
That's obviously a dream that I've had since a little kid. I don't know if that's, if that's gonna pan out.
No. It's like less than one percent. Personally, me, I don't really wanna be a pro. I'm probably just gonna get my medical degrees and just get out of it.
Thank you, mom, for always being supportive, always taking me by me.
For always being there, being my biggest fan, always making sure that I'm taken care of, giving me a practice every single day.
You guys have always pushed me to be my greatest, and I want to thank you for that.
Thanks, mom and dad, for always listening to me and supporting me in all the different sports. I love you guys so much.
Your support and unconditional love has made me too a better athlete and a better person day by day.
We're kids. We're just, we're just having fun, yeah.
That is just so enjoyable.
It'll be a powerful message for parents when they come back to this pack here, um.
Anything to add here? We're just petitioning to be back into membership at the high school league as our procedure is annually.
I make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll say.
Seconded by Bill? Other discussion? Clerk?
Then be resolved that the schools, you know, be through the Cannon Falls.
Cannon Falls, okay. Resolve that the governing board of Cannon Falls Area Schools, County of Goodhue and Dakota, State of Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation. Of inner school athletic athlete, athletic and finite accidents. Referred to in Minnesota statute, section one twenty eight C point zero one. To the Minnesota State High School League, and it, and so hereby certifies that the State Commissioner of Education, as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the high schools listed below, Cannon Falls High School, is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school. To renew its membership in Minnesota State High School League and participate. In the approved inner school to be sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Okay?
Yes vote would be for the.
Approval.
Yep.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Katie, yes, and Bill?
Yes.
It passes by a five zero vote, thank you. Resolution approving school district sixteen fifty one G C E D long term facility maintenance ten year plan.
Uh the next two items, uh the first one being that we're on our calendar, uh which is G C E D's long term facility maintenance ten year plan. Here in our Cannon Falls area, schools uh long term facilities, ten year plan uh need to be approved each year. Um prior to July thirty first. And that shows the revenues and expenditures of the next ten years in various categories for our buildings. Josh, anything to add?
Uh not a lot. The first one, what the ad district, um they need to get approval from each district that is a member of the ad district, that's why. Uh that is before you guys to approve tonight, and then ours is the tenure plan for our district.
So do we have a motion for approval?
And this is a resolution.
Brenda on the motion? Second? Seconded by Katie? Any other discussion? Clerk, would you read?
Except for this.
Oh, okay. Resolution approving school district.
Sixty fifty one.
Sixty fifty one, long term facility maintenance ten year plan. Be resolved by the school board of district number two fifty two, State of Minnesota, as follows. The school board of district, school district two fifty two, has approved the long term facility maintenance ten year plan for Goodhue County Education District six zero five one. Facilities for twenty twenty two, twenty thirty through twenty thirty two. Various components to this plan are attached. So a yes vote would be to approve. The plan, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
The yes, Bill?
Yes.
It passes by a five zero vote, thank you. Resolution approving district two fifty two Cannon Falls area schools long term facility maintenance ten year plan.
Yes, this is the same uh type of plans required by the state for school districts to submit by July thirty first every year. Uh these have the revenues and expenditures. Uh listed out, and there, there is also the resolution as well for us to approve. Okay? And those questions, I guess, it's kind of the yearly ask.
Seems like you featured on that one, Debbie, too.
So we need a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Please on the motion, Bill on the second? Any other discussion? Clerk?
Resolution adopting independent school, school district two fifty two fiscal year twenty four long term facility maintenance ten year plan. It resolved the school board of independent school district number two fifty two, State of Minnesota, approved the attached fiscal year twenty four. Long term facility maintenance ten year plan. So a yes vote would be. Bill?
Yes.
The yes, Luke?
Yes.
My back?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes. It passes by a five zero vote.
So busy more tonight already?
I know. Favorite.
Number seventeen, consideration to approve the twenty two, twenty three mandatory list of policies.
This is an annual item that the board uh has passed at some point.
Procedure will be made, we look at it every year. The motion to approve?
No, there's no change in this, this, Lori?
There's no, no, Phil, I just, the changes will come now in August.
Okay, that's what I.
Yep.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. Bill on the motion, I'll second. Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three mandatory list of policies, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three annual list of policies as found in Policy 208.
This is kind of in the same vein as an annual item of the policy that is found in 208. Which is also attached, which is also attached.
I'll move to, Chris.
Thank you, Brenda.
I'll second.
Brenda on the motion, Katie on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the updated policy 524 internet acceptable use and safety policy.
Uh, this one, there was a legislative change this past spring, and we have updated our policy 524, and we have updated our internet use agreement to fulfill the legislative outcome. Okay, so the policy that's listed here is the updated one that has the strikeouts and threat lines and stuff, I believe.
When you finish your review, look for a motion to approve.
Do you find that it's pretty easy to regulate these things, like, they're one-to-one, like, they're one-to-ones?
We have control over the devices that we hand out, and so we can set limits.
And does it change when the kids come to, like, when they enter into your wifi?
Yeah, we have a student management system that captures their IP address, and then gets really close to my knowledge of technology, but I can.
Sure.
The weird gist of it, right? I have to open my schemes on this, but.
Okay.
That is my understanding of once that device enters the.
And now, when they're on their home internet, can they download things onto that computer?
I don't know if they can or not, that's where, you know, I can follow up with Stacy on that, but I don't, I don't think they can.
Sure, like, are there certain, like?
There's.
Like?
Security on the device outside of our.
I was just curious.
Wifi.
Just curious, um, I know that's been questioned to me, I never thought about it, and people have asked me that.
In my almost thirty years of education, I've found that there's nothing kid-proof.
No.
And so that's where the supervision of parents comes in.
No.
I had a retailer tell me one time that they had kid-proof bathroom walls. And I laughed, and I laughed. And there's no system.
No, it's gonna hide away around anything.
Yep, especially with technology, there's holes, but. It's, I mean, the student management system in the building is pretty great, I can't guarantee.
To, what, outside of that?
But that's where the parent responsibility.
I was just wondering if, like, they downloaded it from home, then brought it to school,
and it's still.
Would they be able to do anything in school with it? Probably not, then.
Probably not.
It probably would kick it out.
It would take it out.
Or it would not allow, it'd say it's not allowed.
Yep.
You know, like, like at Mayo, you get the blue screen, people talking about the blue screen, whatever, you pull up.
It'd be good.
It's yours.
Yeah.
You're right, so you're right.
No, but like, if they would go into their, I, if people tried to go into their bank accounts, it's like they make that, and they ban or allow that, so, you know, like, you can't check it.
Um, I can follow up with Stacy, but I am, I am pretty sure that they can't do much at home.
Okay, so that helps if, like, you.
Either that, or we get, you know, when they, because when that device comes back in within our domain, it registers what's been.
Downloaded.
Happened.
Okay, okay, I gotcha, yep, yeah.
I make the motion to approve. Luke on the motion to approve?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of the updated policy as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Guys, been a busy evening tonight, got a lot of, got a lot accomplished. We're opening our doors up for our, for our community, which is a great thing. So unless something else for the cause is necessary, I could look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Katie? Second? I'll second. Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.